So this time I'll call the Paulding County Board of Commissioners work session for November the 12th, 2024 to order. And glad to recognize some folks in the audience that are elected. Judge Angela O'Connor, thank you for being here, Angela. And we have the new chairman-elect, Tim Estes, who's here. Since the election's behind us, we can do that now. And let's see, I don't think we have anyone else that's elected in the room. So I'd like to remind you to turn off your mobile devices and ask the marshal if they'll bring the list of citizens wishing to speak forward. And our county attorney is going to bring us our invocation this morning. And then right after that, if the cadets will post the colors for us. Jason?
Attention, left base, carry, colors.
Dear Lord, we just come to you now, and we thank you, Lord, for this opportunity to gather as a county. Father, it's very refreshing, Lord, to have these elections behind us. Lord, as we always do, we invite the Holy Spirit to come into this room this morning. Lord, we've got 18 items on this agenda. And Lord, I ask that the Holy Spirit, that you would be here and give these five commissioners here wisdom, insight as to how to decide these 18 items. Lord, we pray your blessing upon them and lay upon their hearts and minds as to the decisions that you would have them make. Lord, as we're getting ready to, we're post-general election now. Lord, I just thank you so much that the elections went smoothly. We praise you for finality, Lord. I, as an attorney, I praise you that we are not in a situation where we have a bunch of last-minute litigation going on as to who the winner is and who the winner's not. Lord, we thank you for finality that you've caused to occur here. Lord, I thank you that the elections operations went smoothly here in Paulding County, essentially without a hitch, and we praise you for that. Lord, I thank you also for, we've got a couple of elected officials here that are counting down the days. Lord, we've got Chairman Carmichael, who's been serving in this role for eight years. And prior to that, as a post-commissioner, he's getting ready to wind down. We have a sheriff, Sheriff Gary Gullidge, who served us as sheriff for 12 years, Lord, and for both of them. They've served faithfully with their whole hearts, Lord. And we ask that you would bless the remaining 49 days and their terms as they finish out come December 31. Lord, we thank you for those that have been elected, Lord. Commissioner-elect Tim Estes, Lord, thank you for the opportunity and what you've laid upon his heart as to what the next four years may bring. Lord, we thank you for bringing Ashley Henson into the sheriff-elect role. And Lord, we pray that you would be with both of those gentlemen, anoint them in their jobs, help what they do and the visions that you've given them to make Paulding County a better place and a safer place. And we just ask that there would be a smoothness during their transitions. We thank you, Lord. We lift up all of these folks, as you've asked us to do in 1 Timothy, Chapter 2, to pray for our leaders, Lord, so that you would, by doing so, you would give us a peaceful and quiet life. We thank you, Lord, and we lift that up in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Over, march. Colors, hold. Right, face, present, colors. Please, please join us in saying, "Pleasure, ladies and gentlemen."
Pleasure, ladies and gentlemen. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Carry, colors. Close. Right, face, over, march.
Thank you, Jason Phillips, for starting us off right with that invocation. And we thank you, JROTC, again, for being here and allowing us to have a patriotic start to this meeting. The minutes are available from the October 22nd, 2024 work session and the October 22nd, 2024 board meeting minutes. They're all available for your review on that back table if you're interested in getting a copy. Under announcements this morning, Team Paulding is Employee of the Month. Time to celebrate. That again, and the Board of Commissioners would like to recognize Ms. Vicki Powell with the Water System Department for over 40 years of service to Paulding County. Let's watch this together.
Basically, every day Vicki works for Christine. And for the work that she's done, there's just nothing but excellent things to say about Vicki.
Vicki is the only person in my department that is not easily rattled. I can count on one hand in 20 years how many times I've seen her rattled by a customer. She just handles it calmly, collectively, just very sweetly, but gets her point across. A day in the life of Vicki Powell is come in, make sure everybody's there, unlock the front door and get ready for your day. Typically, she has customer calls to return from the day before. If someone didn't balance, she has to go figure that out. She takes care of me when I'm losing my mind. She stays busy. I've been there 20 years. She has been with the department 46 years, so long time.
What's special is Vicki is looking to retire, but she's been at the department back when it was authority. She's been through over seven directors. It's kind of like when I started at the water system, it was in the beginning Vicki. Vicki, like Christine said, she's not rattled, she's even keeled, she's very professional, and she's the history of the water department. All I can say is Vicki, we appreciate everything you've done. When people have been gone, you've stepped in numerous roles to take care of things, and you are going to be one person that's very, very difficult, if possible, to replace.
Good job, Ray, and Team Jeff Harkins, that's really good coverage there. Thank you. We're excited to have in the house Tim Early and Sarah, who are part of the Make-A-Wish of Georgia, who are here to actually present us with a check. And I'm going to acknowledge Frank Baker, who's going to bring them up and cover this exchange.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a really good day for us. We just concluded our seventh annual ride back in October. And we're going to have a check presentation in a minute for $11,501.63. So we've got a grand total of over $71,000 we've done in seven years. So I'm going to turn it over to Tim. And Tim has been with us for a while, and I've known Tim for a long time. And I think this is one of his favorite events to come out. He was telling me this morning, and I had known this earlier, he's been riding the Silver Comet Trail for years, and so it's just ironic that we started this thing seven years ago. So, Tim?
Chairman Commissioners, it's my pleasure to be here with you once again. We had another wonderful Ride for Wishes just a few weeks back. And as Frank said, it really is one of my favorite events. I love coming up here on that morning and celebrating and seeing everyone come out. This year, we had a great turnout. We are also joined by Wish Kid Ollie and his brother Owen, who had just returned from their wish to go to Disneyland where they had a special Spider-Man experience. So if you were there, you got to learn the special secret handshake that Ollie showed all of us. If you weren't, you need to make sure that you come out next year and see how that goes. But Frank and I were talking about back when I would ride up here and how much the area has changed and how much it's grown, and I think that's just a testament to all the fine people in Paulding County and to see that population growth. And when I spoke at the Ride for Wishes, we had 15, 16 wish kids pending in Paulding County. Just since that time, we're now up to 22. So we will get those wishes granted, thanks to events like Ride for Wishes and all of your help and support. Chairman, I know you like to know some of the types of wishes that we typically grant. So for Paulding County kids, we've got a few pending now for Disneyland, Disney World. We had a wish to go see the Golden State Warriors. Wrong team, but that's okay. We're going to make that happen. And we've got a wish to meet Dan and Shay, a country music duo. So lots of fun wishes coming up, and thanks to your help, we're going to make them all come true.
What's the Blue Star? Is that just?
Blue Star is just a symbol for Make-A-Wish and all the Make-A-Wish chapters that we have, and so we just like to wear this wherever we go. We'll get you one.
I'm retiring, but I'm going to be out here with 14 grandchildren.
I look forward to seeing you there next year as well.
Mr. Chairman, we'd like to do a picture with an actual presentation.
Come forward, if you will. No pressure, Angela.
Just as you said that.
Front page, New York Times. Thanks again, Tim and Sarah. It's just a joy to have you here with us. Well, those were our invited guests this morning, so we threw that one on the agenda. Next is bid awards, and item two is to discuss action to award the fiscal year 2025 Paulding County Right-of-Way Vertical Mowing Contract 1 to the lowest reliable bidder of Terra Solutions Incorporated in the amount of $118,057.53. The funding for this project will be allocated from general funds and the projects located in post one, two, and three. The famous Mr. George Jones.
Morning, Chairman. Morning, all. The county finance department advertised the DOT's project known as the FY25 Paulding County Right-of-Way Vertical Mowing Contract 1. The project consists of performing vertical mowing and trimming along both sides of established county roadway shoulders and vertically up to 25 feet in the air of all trees and tree branches that are encroaching or a threat to encroach from the sides of the right-of-way onto the travelways. Length of the project is 80 miles and located in post one, two, and three. Three bids received this project and opened on September 30th, 2024. The low-bid contractor for this project did not have the equipment or experience to perform the work, so we opted to look at the second-low-bid contractor. The second-low-bid contractor did have the experience, equipment, and work history to perform this work, in our opinion. So DOT has reviewed the bid and recommends award of the FY25 Right-of-Way Vertical Mowing Contract 1 to the second lowest reliable bidder, Opterra Solutions, in the amount of $118,057.53. This was a rebid of the original project. The original bids came in much higher than what we expected, so we opted to do a rebid with essentially a pre-contract consulting bid conference and trying to answer questions and expectations of the folks who are interested in bidding on that. Based on that information and providing that to the contractors, we're able to award this project at a cost of over $31,000 in the original bids that came in. So we felt that was a good idea, so we're likely to use a pre-bid conference in the future for projects like this. If approved, the project funding will be allocated from general funds and has a three-month completion time from notice to proceed issues.
Any questions for George? Moving on to item three, discuss action to award the purchase of two 360MQ2s thermoplastic line striping application machines from TransCore in the amount of $61,300. This capital purchase was approved in the fiscal year 2025 capital budget for Paulding County, for the Paulding County DOT, and will be funded using general funds.
As you said, Chairman, including an FY25 budget as capital purchase, Paulding County DOT requested and received funding in an amount of $58,000 for two thermoplastic line striping application machines to replace existing units. Equipment we used in our traffic operations division to install yellow center line striping, white edge line striping, stop bars, et cetera, that type of thing. DOT received quotes from three pieces of equipment under consideration were models from 360MQ2 from Trantex. Three bids were received. We're requesting authorization to approve the purchase of the two machines from TransCore in the amount of $61,300. That was the lowest bidder for this project, and if approved, this funding will be used from the general funds capital.
Item four, discuss action to award emergency drainage repairs for Seminole Drive Phase 2, Drainage Pipe Reclamation, project number SW-24-05 Phase 2, to CSTE Incorporated in the amount of $68,277. Projects located in post one and will be funded with general funds from the stormwater budget.
On October 22nd, 2024, the Board of Commissioners awarded an emergency drainage project improvement Seminole Drive Phase 1, located between Addresses 158 and 198 Seminole Drive in the Indian Springs subdivision. That work included mainly spin casting of the existing pipe out there, essentially stabilizing the soils and filling the existing 18-inch pipe with grout. That work has started. We already have the contract out there for Phase 1. Phase 2 of the project consists of construction of concrete flumes, head walls for the 60-inch pipe that's out there, replacement of concrete curb and gutter, and re-establishing the slopes and shoulders of the area. Paulding County DOT requested quotes from three companies. From the three companies that were requested quotes, we recommend a bid to the lowest responsive bidder, CSTE Incorporated, in the amount of $68,277. They have the ability to begin work immediately once the NTP has been issued. Like I said, this will be, if approved, the funding for this project will be allocated from general funds stormwater.
And item five, discuss action to award the Cedar Crest Road High Crest Drive and Cedar Creek Court Intersection Improvement Project, which is PRIMP-CR473, CR1786, consisting of increasing entrance radii and installing raised concrete islands to improve traffic channelization at the neighborhood entrances to Northwest Georgia paving, the amount of This project's located in post one and also in post four. This project will be funded with general funds from the DOT budget.
Paulding County DOT has a project identified as a Cedar Crest Road High Crest Drive Cedar Creek Court Intersection Improvement Project, located in post one and post four, as you stated. Project consists of increasing the intersection radii for both side street entrances, installing raised concrete islands between Cedar Crest Road and the thru-lanes and the dedicated right-turn lanes for each subdivision street to help channelize through movement traffic on Cedar Crest Road. This is an interim project until the Cedar Crest Road widening project can be completed. Paulding County requested quotes from multiple companies for this work. We received quotes from two companies, and one company responded with a no-bid letter. We reviewed the quotes, recommend award to the lowest responsible bidder, Northwest Georgia Paving, in the amount of $68,823.60. Northwest Georgia Paving has performed work for the county before and can begin work as soon as a notice proceed is issued. You know, if approved, the funding of this project will be allocated from general funds.
Questions for George? Is there a lot of accidents at that intersection, George?
I believe in the last three years, we located 10, you know, recorded crashes that sometimes there are crashes that are not recorded through Gears, the Georgia crash repository, but we located at least 10.
That was in what, a long timeframe?
Three years, 36 months.
You've got a lot going on, sir.
Well, we have staff trying to put out projects, so there's, like I said, we have 1,000 miles of county roadways, so I think everything's proportional, you know? Where I grew up, I left 20 some odd years ago, and they've had one intersection improvement project. People are moving away, unfortunately. And here, you have just people moving in, so there's just a lot going on.
I appreciate your work and your staff. Reports from committees and departments, none. Public participation on agenda items, no one has signed up. Moving on to the consent agenda itself, which I am required to read, consideration of the following consent agenda items. Item six is to adopt the Department of Transportation job descriptions for a stormwater project manager and stormwater administrative assistant. Item seven is to approve, the approval of the change order with prospective engineering for design services in the amount of $33,550. And funding will be allocated from, for this project in, hold on, let me look at the new version here. Funding will be allocated from general funds, the project's located in post four. Item eight is to adopt the Paulding County Board of Commissioners 2025 regular meeting schedule. Item nine is to declare the attached list of items as a surplus and approve their disposal through auction, trade, or donation. It's a very long list. There are 22 vehicles on the list. If you don't have it on your agenda, there are some copies of these surplus items on the back table. Also includes several maintenance tools, vehicle maintenance tools, to be surplused. Would any of the commissioners like to move any of the consent agenda items as a regular business, new business item?
I don't necessarily want to move anything, but on seven, what is that project? It doesn't really say what it is.
That's the animal control project.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or anybody want to move it? All right, we'll leave it at consent. Old business, none. New business, moving to new business, is item 10. Discuss action to adopt ordinance 2024-11, amending the Paulding County Ethics Ordinance to add an additional prohibition regarding executive sessions. And our county attorney, Mr. Phillips, is going to elaborate.
All right. Under state law, under the Open Meetings Act, the General Assembly has declared there's a small number of things that the local county boards of commissioners may go into executive session to discuss. Typically, when the county goes into executive session, it's for the purposes of discussing real estate, personnel, or matters which are subject to attorney-client privilege. This provision here amends our ethics ordinance to add an additional prohibition that essentially says what is discussed in executive session needs to stay in executive session. The purpose of adding this prohibition to the ethics ordinance will help encourage when you're discussing this limited group of topics, it's important that you have confidentiality in the group and that nothing is released from that, so that your commissioners may have candid discussions over sensitive issues without any fear that whatever their thoughts or concerns happen to be on the topic, that those won't be later disseminated out in public. Because if you lose that aspect of confidentiality, you may have county officials that are less likely to express their concerns regarding various particular issues. So this is an amendment to the ethics ordinance to add an additional prohibition. And if one of those executive session topics is later voted upon in public, such as a real estate acquisition, at that point in time, the confidentiality will no longer exist as to that particular item that's been voted on in public. Be happy to answer any questions.
I think a third grader could understand that.
Good, good.
And you directed that toward me, right?
No, no, sir. You've got a few more years than I do.
All right. Item 11 for new business is discuss action to adopt ordinance 2024-12, amending Chapter 6 of the official Paulding County Code to reduce the patron seat requirement for retail on-premises consumption licenses. Again, Mr. Phillips.
All right, in Paulding County, when you sit at a restaurant that serves alcohol, that's because they have an alcohol license. In order to get an alcohol license, in this case, what's called a pouring license, a restaurant essentially has to meet the definition of what's called an eating establishment. An eating establishment has three components. Two of the components that are not changed by this proposed amendment are, one, the eating establishment must generate at least 50%, I think 50% plus of its revenues from food revenue. You can't get 50% plus from alcohol sales, so you have to have at least 50% of your revenue from food sales. You also have to have a valid food service permit from the Department of Environmental Health. Additionally, right now, there is a seating capacity requirement. The minimum seating capacity requirement that exists now is 50 seats. This proposed amendment reduces the seating capacity down to 20. So that will allow for smaller restaurants that are located in the county that meet the definition of meeting the food sales requirement and also have a valid food service permit to have a smaller seating capacity. And that, in essence, is the purpose of the change in the amendment, it's allow, to allow smaller businesses, smaller restaurants to have pouring licenses. Happy to try to answer any questions.
I have a question about that, Jason. What, how many restaurants will be affected? Like, how many do we have now that have this pouring license? And then how many could we potentially have if we pass this?
Those are great, great questions. I do not have those answers. I don't know if anybody, if the marshal's office or Mr. Baker, whether you have any information on that. We can certainly find out if we don't have it.
Yeah, we can find that out before 2:00.
Okay, we'll table that question until 2:00. Any other questions, concerns? All right, move to item 12, is discuss action to authorize the chairman to enter into a contract with Pond and Company in the amount of $52,462.64 for a bridge assessment agreement. This contract will be funded with general funds and is located in all four posts. Mr. Jones?
Approximately every two years, by law, the Georgia Department of Transportation routinely inspects vehicular bridges on state and local roadways. Once inspections are complete, GDOT provides the county the report containing the bridge condition ratings as well as recommendations for repairs. After reviewing the 2024 bridge report that we recently received, we determined that 27 of the 53 local government bridges in Paulding County should be inspected more thoroughly. Paulding County DOT contacted Pond and Company to request and a proposal for an in-depth bridge assessment of those bridges, 25 within Paulding County and two within the city of Dallas. Pond and Company will assess each bridge, develop concept-level cost estimates for any recommended repairs, and assist the county in prioritizing the completion of the maintenance activities. Pond and Company has performed these services for other metro Atlanta local governments. Essentially, we're going off the axiom that a pound of, or an ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure, try to get any issue.
worth a pound of cure, try to get any issues repaired immediately, rusting, spalling, undermining. It expected this work to be completed within four weeks of a notice to proceed issuance. The cost for the bridge assessment for the 28 bridges is $52,462.64, $48,175.12 for the county's bridges, and $4,287.52 for the city of Dallas, two structures that are considered bridges. The city of Dallas has agreed to reimburse the county for their portion of the bridge assessment. If approved, funding will be allocated from the general funds, and the bridge locations are located in all posts in the county.
Questions?
George, just to be clear, the assessment will include projected construction cost, repair cost?
I believe so, yeah. I'll look at that, let me see, what does it say? Yes, concept level cost estimates, yes.
Item Thirteen is Discuss action to authorize the chairman to enter into an intergovernmental lighting agreement with the Georgia Department of Transportation for street lighting for the roundabout project located at State Route 101. At State Route 120, the intersection of 101 and 120, it's GDOT PI number 0018367. Funding will be allocated from the general funds and the projects located in Post Two.
Local governments typically provide street lighting as a county service. Paulding County has a streetlight program and absores the expense of the costs incurred for energy, operation, and maintenance associated with traffic signals, flashing beacons, and streetlights in the event that these are located on state highways. The State Route 101 at State Route 120 Roundabout Project was awarded to Wilson Construction Management on April 30, 2024, by the Board of Commissioners. This is located in Post Two. A roundabout lighting agreement is required for this location, and an intergovernmental lighting agreement is required to be executed between GDOT and the county for the materials and installation of the lighting system, and also the continuing electrical costs for the lighting each month. The agreement contains language that the county agrees to assume responsibility for the costs of the operation, repair, and maintenance of the entire lighting system for this project. You know, if approved, the cost for this will be allocated for the materials from SPOSS, which is already included in the current project, and the monthly recurring lighting expenses be borne by the Streetlight Fund. This is typically something that GDOT requires on all projects that are essentially county-driven that are on state roads.
Questions?
We're getting closer, aren't we, George?
Yes, ma'am. That is, that is the goal.
Item Fourteen, Discuss action to authorize the chairman to enter into a right-of-way mowing and maintenance agreement with the Georgia Department of Transportation for PI number 0013702, State Route 61, from Dallas-Nebo Road to State Route 6/US278. This is a widening project, and the project's located in Post One, Two, and Three. The funding will be allocated from general funds.
The Georgia Department of Transportation, GDOT, is developing plans to widen and reconstruct four miles of State Route 61 going from Dallas-Nebo Road to south of it actually, to US278, Jimmy Campbell Parkway, identified as Project PI 0013702. The project is located in Posts One, Two, and Three. They'll widen essentially the existing Highway 61 to a four-lane divided section with a 20-foot median, 11-foot lanes, urban curb shoulders consisting of 30-inch curb and gutter, two-foot beauty strip, and five-foot sidewalks on both sides of the roadway. GDOT submitted a request to Paulding County to enter into a right-of-way mowing and maintenance agreement where the county would commit to the maintenance of the proposed landscaping and sidewalk within limits of the four-mile project for a term of 50 years. The county has signed previous right-of-way mowing and maintenance agreements for Highway 92 South project and for other projects such as the 101-120 Roundabout Project and the ongoing 101 Goldmine Road Project. This mowing and maintenance agreement includes language that the county would maintain the medians, the sodded outside shoulders, handle the sidewalk repairs and remove litter and graffiti along the four-mile-plus corridor. The county was responsible solely for those costs. We tried to tabulate an estimate of those costs in current year times. Essentially, you're looking at around $81,000, $83,000 per year for the mowing and maintenance of that section of roadway that would be borne by the county budget if approved. Again, if approved, this funding for this agreement would be utilized, or would it come from the general fund?
Item Fifteen, Discuss action to approve change order number one with FAFS Scarborough in the amount of $49,766.09 for the removal of unsuitable soils as part of the Mount Tabor Park Drive Relocation Project. Mr. Justice.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You are all very familiar with the driveway relocation project that we have going on at Mount Tabor. As part of that project, we have found the original topsoil burial pile from when the park was constructed, and it just so happens to be right underneath the driveway. So there's a section of that that we need to remove. That was found, I should mention, by the third-party testing agency, Nova Engineering, that you guys approved a couple of meetings ago for us to look out for those unsuitable soils. Pretty simple, if, we can't put the road there on top of that material because the road will fail and we'll end up doing it again. So that section needs to be removed. Not always bad, though, it's topsoil, we can spread it throughout the park and help for some healthier grass growth, you know, in other areas, too. So we would recommend approval of the change order. I didn't list that it is in Post One, and it would be additional SPOSS dollars that fund that project. Be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Where are you going to borrow from?
The same areas, just outside of that pit. There's plenty of clay there. Then we'll, we'll strip that and then just replace the, the removed topsoil into those areas. So there's no import or export of materials, it'll all be done there on site.
What's with the nine cents?
No idea. No idea.
I mean, it doesn't really matter, but I just thought it was kind of weird.
Yes, ma'am.
For that amount, and nine cents.
Right.
Michael, any idea how it's going to affect the schedule?
We're getting close now, and this is not a big area. We're getting close to a period of time where we can expect some wet weather. That will be what determines whether or not it will delay it. It's at final grade now, that's where we found the material. If they can get it out of there quickly, and the weather will hold for a little while, then it should be completed before the end of the year. If not, unfortunately, it might push us to spring.
All right, moving on to Sixteen.
Thank you.
Thank you. Discuss action to award the renewal of flow monitoring services to ADS Environmental Services in the amount not to exceed $309,460 for the period of December 1, 2024 through November 30, 2025. Funding will be allocated from the renewal and extension funds, the projects located in all the posts. Mr. Ray Wooton.
Good morning.
Good morning.
As you all know, people continue to move into the county, build in the county. We try to maintain our wastewater collection system to make sure we make all available area in our wastewater reclamation facilities for treatment of those flows. We have 32 flow monitors and four rain gauges. These help us to try to eliminate and reduce any ionized into our system. Y'all approved this contract last year, and this is renewal of the contract. And another thing that we're able to do with these flow monitors, whenever we have an issue that shows up at a pump station with this system of monitors, we can track down where we may have issues. We also move these monitors from time to time when we do find an issue to locate the source of the inflow into the sewer system. So we're hoping that you will renew this contract for our flow monitoring, and we can actually do this on a website and actually locate any sources of inflow a lot more quickly.
Questions for Ray? Interesting. Okay, we'll move on to Mr. Phillips, again, with Item Seventeen. Discuss action to approve the first. Discuss action to adopt a 2025 amended. Discuss, I'm sorry, discuss action to adopt a 2024 budget amendment for opioid funds. Ms. Pollard.
This is a little housekeeping. In going through and preparing our financial statements that ended, for the fiscal year that ended June 30 of 2024, this, it became obvious to me, or to my attention, was brought to my attention that I didn't have a budget for the opioid funds. But what the opioid funds were for is the pharmaceutical class action lawsuit that we all joined into back in 2022. Funding has been accumulating some over time, so there's no real way to estimate those revenues that you just get notification, that there's been a settlement, and this is the amount that you're going to be given. There are very strict restrictions on what you can use those funds for, so basically, it's in the fight against, fight treatment, education against opioids. We have spent some of those funds to purchase Narcan for the sheriff's office, the school system, as well as the fire department in 2024. So for that reason, I need a budget amendment, basically, that said, you know, you received in $75,000 and you spent $75,000. You received in a little bit more than that, and you did not spend quite that much. But basically, this will just clean that up. And then in number 18 is 2025 original budget, so basically, I'm estimating that we won't, won't receive any money. I don't have any reason to know what's coming and what's not. Like I said, those, those revenues just come in, so basically, you'll budget what's there. You have more than the $125,000 that I'm budgeting for, but it's assuming that you'll use those over the next few years. We won't utilize all of those funds in one year. So basically, this is just housekeeping. It gives me an amended budget for 2024 and an original budget for 2025.
Questions for Tabitha? Thank you very much. That is the conclusion of regular business. She, she just covered 18 with 17, so moving on to the end of the agenda here. Appreciate everyone's patience and interest in being here. Conclusion of regular business, public participation on non-agenda items, we don't have any this morning. I would like to recognize Mr. Jim Tully, who came in, who's representative from Marjorie Taylor Greene's office. Thank you for being here, Jim.
Pleasure, Mr. Chairman.
And somebody else that I'd like you all to meet is our, our new fire chief, Garrett Brubaker. Garrett, you want to kind of walk up where they can see you and they don't have to turn their heads?
Nothing like putting you on the spot.
And because we love Tally, Richard, and Cable, and they have another attorney that you all have met, but Ms. Ella Hendricks. Ella, you want to stand up? All right, any commissioners have any comments, announcements, surprise announcements, or?
I want to say thank you to all of Paulding County for showing up and voting. I am so proud of that and so proud of our Board of Elections and that whole election department for everything, like, we were an example for the whole state of how it ought, and really, the whole nation, of how it ought to be done. I believe they're still counting votes in places, which really scares me. And I'm glad that Paulding just got it out, got it done, and perfect job. Thanks so much.
Mr. Chairman, I have an announcement.
Go ahead, Frank.
I just want to follow up on a question that Commissioner Galloway had. You had requested the number of restaurants. Currently, we have 22 restaurants and four event centers that are currently able to have a pouring license. We don't have a database to be able to track the others. We don't know the seating capacity of the other restaurants, so that's some information we will not be able to provide. But it's 22 current restaurants and four current event centers.
And kind of tying into Virginia's, I mean, what an awesome job. All the commissioners have personally thanked Deidre and her staff, their employees. You know, it's just a good experience to come vote here, and it's fast, and they just did a super job. I don't see Deidre in here, but I see Cecilia, and I see the chairwoman, Peggy, so let's give them a hand.
Angie.
Angie Dunn. Okay, well, I've got one, anybody else? All right. Well, I want to tell you, just came from my heart, some things that I love. I love the United States of America. I wouldn't wear a tie like this if I didn't intend. And that's why I served in the military, because I loved our country. And at the time, Vietnam was going on. Fortunately, Nixon brought everybody out of Vietnam before I got finished training, so I didn't get shot at. So, but there are other things. You know, we live in a great state, it's only a couple of hours to the mountains, you can get to the coast in four hours, you can get to the Gulf of Mexico in six hours. The climate's nice and moderate, it's rarely ever too hot, it's rarely ever too cold. Georgia's just a great place to live. What county could be better than Paulding County as far as friendly people and is, just as far as the people that you come in contact from day to day? I don't think anybody touches Paulding County. And I love our department heads, our staff, y'all do a wonderful job. I love this panel up here because we're willing to argue and then let it go, you know, agree to disagree. And Baker Street, and I love music, he just knows a lot more about it than I do. He knows song and singer. I love Ray Charles, and I've arranged for 30 seconds of Ray Charles to be on your monitors. It won't go out live stream because that'd be against the, what laws?
Copyright.
Copyright laws, yeah. So. Is there a request about executive session?
Mr. Chairman, at this time, I'm suggesting that the board go into executive session in addition to real estate for personnel and to adjourn from executive session.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we go into executive session for real estate and also personnel and to adjourn from the room across the hall instead of coming back in here. Is there a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second? All who's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And a motion to adjourn, somebody do that for us? Good, okay, we stand adjourned. Thank you for being here, everybody.